We're on to our local control accountability plan. Again, thank you, Mr. Cast, for coming forward. You want to introduce the item, Superintendent?
Yes, thank you again. Good evening. The purpose of this item is to ask the board to review the updated LCAP for your first reading and make recommendations to staff in preparation for possible final approval at our June 24th meeting. And we have Ms. Lori McDonald making her first-ever official school board appearance this evening.
Welcome, Ms. McDonald.
Lisa will give you a hand, Ms. McDonald.
Good evening, Board members. I am going to just give you a 35,000-foot view, just real quick, in order to orient you to the current 15-16 LCAP that tonight is the public hearing for, was the public hearing for. And then we can go into details about the content, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about the document that you've looked at, that we sent you. The first thing to note is that it is different. And why is the 15-16 LCAP different? The first reason, there are two big ones. One is there are four major shifts that have occurred in the last year. The one is that the district has new goals, district goals, that were incorporated into the LCAP. The district also has new leadership, both at the site level and at central office. The LCAP template itself shifted, and that wasn't just a layout issue. It actually has you focus on the plan in different ways, so that was important for us. There are also the metrics and the conditions of learning and the 27 metrics that last year were optional from the state that this year are required. So those four shifts impacted the work as we were looking at it. The other thing is that we looked at last year's LCAP, and since this is really an authentic improvement process, the state made their changes, and we also looked at last year's LCAP and thought, we can do better in terms of creating a more cohesive vision for the programs to serve the district. So the shifts, and then looking at the LCAP from last year, let us think that there were some things we could do in order to increase alignment throughout the whole document. So that is, those are the major reasons for the shifts and the changes in this year's LCAP. I want to give you just an overview of the structure so that it will help in the analysis of it. The first part, let's see, Section 2. Wait, hold on. Uh-oh. This is possibly, sorry.
You can use your-
It's an animation issue. So can I just show you this slide like this? Yeah, okay. It will lack the, you know, the flying in and stuff, but you're okay with that. So there are four major sections to the LCAP. Section 1 talks about the stakeholder engagement. Section 2, that's the main part for this year, which we'll talk about in a minute. Section 3 is about the use of funds specifically for the unduplicated students. And Section 4 reiterates in prose what you did to serve the supplemental and concentration Highlighting Section 2 is important. There are two main sections. The annual update, oh gosh, I'm just, I really pride myself on being kind of animation savvy with this thing, but not so tonight. We're not getting graded on our, no. Good to know. Okay, Section 2, the annual update, has basically four sections. The expected outcomes, and then the actual outcomes, the planned actions and services, and then the actual outcomes and services. And so that is quite a lengthy portion of the document. The other part of Section 2 are the goals, actions, and expenditures. This is the part of the new template. In that section, there are three goals that we address. We talk about needs, and those have to be data-informed, either data that we've gathered from the district or research that we've done that is currently informing our thinking. We have to have measurable outcomes, and then we talk about actions and expenditures. So that's the bulk of the section for this year. Okay, can I just see if this one works? Okay, that's all right. I mean, I'm just talking to myself now, saying, "It's all right." Like, don't panic. There's one more major issue besides all that I've just mentioned in terms of the shifts. The other thing is that we have to address these eight conditions of learning in the LCAP. Basic services, state standards, parent involvement, pupil achievement and engagement, school climate, course access, and other student outcomes. And in true bureaucratic fashion, eight conditions of learning wasn't enough. They turned those into 27 metrics, all of which have to be addressed specifically in the LCAP. So we took these 27 metrics and did sort of the revision for this year so that we would have them all covered. Well, this isn't going to work because it has a little thing. Doesn't matter. Okay, so all of that, the diverse elements I just mentioned, went into creating some alignment for this year's LCAP, and that's what you're looking at. Okay? So that's it in terms of the overview. The content itself, well, imagine if I had tried to do a PowerPoint now that didn't work, where we had to read it like this. So the content itself is the bulk of what would be of interest to you, and we are happy to take questions about the content at this time.
Yeah, I do have lots of comments and questions, but I'm going to hold mine till after public comment, but if there's some kind of top-level clarifying questions from other board members, maybe we should take those now. I'm not seeing anyone rush. Are you looking to see if you do, Mr. Maron? Okay, all right. Do we have any public comment on the LCAP item? Yeah, Mr. Weiner, sure. Yeah, come on up so we can get you on camera and mic for viewers at home.
I have viewers at home. Just, I know the engagement part. I don't remember if the high school staff did an LCAP meeting with Ms. Allen when she was principal before she left, or if that was last year, and I'm wondering, because we haven't had any talk about LCAP this whole year in any PDs or anything like that. There's been no follow-up. Also, I know some of the items that were put in the LCAP, like a PBIS stipend, which I saw in the paper, never came to fruition. And so, like, where's the accountability with what's in the LCAP and what's actually coming out of it?
Okay.
And the engagement. I'm really curious, like, who's coming up with all these answers? Who's being talked to? And I know you guys don't control all that, but, like, we never see district-level employees at the high school. I know I've seen Rubio at there during hours three times this year. Might have been there more, but that's one I've seen. So where's the high school's input coming in?
Got it, okay. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Maybe you can start with talking about what if any engagement took place at the high school, responding to that. You should come back up because we're going to have questions for you.
Can you run it through you?
Yeah.
Or he could do that, too. Sure, but we still want you to come back up. Let me just clarify, Mr. Weiner, the LCAP was brand-new last year, so Ms. Allen was no longer principal. She was deputy superintendent when the LCAP requirement kicked in. So this is just the second year that the state as a whole has been doing this LCAP. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's a good point. Yeah, I thought you were referring to when she was principal in the first time around. Right. That's a good point. So Dr. Rubio, you want to talk? Why don't you just generally talk about the engagement with the, since it's Section 1, the teachers at the high school, at Annie Yates', and the broader community?
I'd be glad to. The engagement, as a reminder or information, if it's not known, the engagement process started last December with invitations that were US-mailed to all parents that were sent home as flyers in Spanish and English, and where teachers were invited to participate in a two-day visioning process in January. It was from that two days of work, which had a lot of staff and members of the high school present as well, that really helped us create those four new goals that we merged the first two, so we have three, like we did last year in LCAP, just to keep that the same. But that's where the engagement process started. Since that time, we have had public meetings where we have invited teachers and parents. We held one at Annie Yates', and we had parents and teachers participate, and we had one here at the district office, and one that included members of the citizen oversight committee. And we have also invited teachers and staff from both sites to participate in the ongoing action committees. We actually do have a couple of high school staff members helping with that. One is focused more on technology. One is focused more on student achievement and inquiry for next year, or teacher inquiry. So we've had pretty broad engagement. We've been meeting with parents as well, again, in separate groups, as two advisory committees in the last several weeks, maybe not farther back than a month at this point. And then we'll be at the high school coming up. We're scheduling that to actually engage students. So, but there is one more thing. As I mentioned to President Affeldt last week, we will also be sending this document, we wanted the draft to come, the first reading to come tonight, but we're going to be sending this tomorrow, Friday, to all teachers to allow the opportunity for any teachers to go through it, let us know. Because we've noticed, as Mr. Weiner actually pointed out, there were things that we said we were going to do that didn't happen. And there were some things that we did, that we still want to observe and assess how well we did. So teachers will have that opportunity as well.
Okay. Other comments from board members or questions?
Can we get a better accounting of the engagement? Because I think, I heard a lot of things in there. I'm given pause by the idea that we're just now going to engage the high school students with, what, 10 days of school or less left? I'm not sure their minds are going to be focused on planning for the fall at this point, but I would love to see some sign-in sheets and, you know, working documents, maybe agendas or things, a little bit more full accounting of how actively we engage the community. I'm worried that if we have an entire site that felt left out, and I've, you know, it's not the first time I've heard that. I think we had this issue last year where, you know, the teacher voice was not a part of the LCAP, nor were students included. So I think it'd be really great for the community to see that, you know what, we had these meetings. These are the people who attended. This is what was covered. You know, some sort of accounting of what was recommended and how that was folded in to the LCAP so we can really get a tracking of not just the finished document, but really the process. You know, I know, you know, I've written a couple of these. That's the wrong way to phrase that. I have participated in a very large, very cumbersome process that involves multiple meetings with multiple stakeholders, and we always have a very clear sort of sign-in process, agendas, you know, note-taking, and really, you know, we spend a lot of time with post-it notes, making sure we've captured each item. So I'd love to see that. I'm concerned that we're starting with the visioning process, which, you know, I know others disagree with me, but I felt was a very exclusive process, not inclusive, and which also produced a document that I felt was really also exclusive, not inclusive of our students. So I'm concerned that that's the driving force behind that, because that really is a top-down process, and the LCAP, to me, should be a really more collaborative thing. So I'd love to see that accounting, so.
I think we can include that as an attachment to the LCAP if the board likes. We can add sign-in sheets from all of our meetings. I wouldn't agree with you about the inclusive versus exclusive piece of what you shared, but I'd be glad to add that if it's well to the entire board.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we need to put the sign-in sheets with people's names on it, but I would, I think having an appendix that quantifies-
Numbers or-
Yeah, numbers of meetings, what the day, and we did that last year, I believe, and it was more detailed than the meetings, the dates, the number of people that were there, you know, which constituency they were representing. I think something more detailed like that would be-
Sure, we can put that in the engagement section, lay it out.
Again, I'd like to see, I think, again, I just, I agree with Member Affeldt, it doesn't belong in the LCAP. I'm saying I'd like to see the process. I'd like to have a view and to sort of map that all out, and, you know, I don't want a summary. I want to see the working documents.
Would you, wouldn't?
Yeah, I'm happy to get them by email, that's fine.
Okay. Is that, yeah, is that fine with the board like that?
Sure.
Sure. Okay.
Ms. McDonald? Okay.
Don't go away, Mr. Maron.
All right. While we're on the engagement process, yeah, I mean, I, the, I too am concerned that we're coming at the students a little late, but, and we're trying to adopt a policy which we haven't yet formalized for the student engagement. So, you know, I don't know if we're, how you're thinking of engaging the students. But to the extent we can follow the proposed policy and get some, you know, real representatives from each grade level at a minimum, well, I want to go beyond that. But also, I mean, are you presenting this to student councils? Are you walking through the content with them? What's your plan for that conversation? And what, let me put it this way before you even have to answer. What, since I work with students and parents around LCAP development, what we have found helpful is to have some capacity-building training as part of the conversation and not just going in saying, "What do you want? What do you think of this?" But explaining, you know, what is this LCAP? What's the enterprise here, and what's your role in it?
I had a parent meeting recently, our parent advisory committee for the LCAP, and the first 45 minutes of the meeting was learning the acronyms. And it was, it was a great work session, really incredible. All of those notes are captured on a shared document, which anybody can have access to. So my intent for any of these meetings would be to do what I so, you know, did with such smoothness tonight, but to share kind of the overview and to share the acronyms that are involved. They were really interested in the connection between LCFF and LCAP, and then just some of the vision around shifts in education in general. Once we got those down, then we were able to look at some specifics in there, and the conversation was very rich. They gave input. In fact, the tutoring issue came up and wasn't in there, and so it was added to the LCAP. So they, we are supposed to have not just feedback, but direct input into the plan. The great thing that, and I really also do regret not having the time to meet with the students yet, but it was a dynamic enough group, and they are committed, this group of parents, and we would like to grow it. It was a small group, but they're committed to coming back, and we set out our map to meet four times a year to see how we're doing, not just to meet the compliance of the LCAPs, to do the annual review, but to see how are we doing. And that is because, and these meetings attest to that, that it really is just a bureaucratic hoop if we only do what's, you know, the complacency piece. But it's very exciting to think that we could engage students and parents and teachers and all the stakeholders in an authentic way to say, "How can we do better?" And that is what happened with the parents the other day. I wouldn't, I can do the work, the limited impact that I have, I can do better because of them the other day. I am assuming that that's also true with the students. So I'll give an overview. I'll keep good notes. It'll be more than just the complacency piece, just to meet, you know, whatever. That's my goal at least.
Okay. It sounds like you're heading in the right direction. How many parents are on the parent advisory committee, and how were they selected?
They, there were four, two from Annie Yates', two from the high school. They were selected, we, John, you probably, Dr. Rubio, you probably know better than I.
It was, outreach was made to all the parents who've been involved along the road since January to try to find as many parents as we could to involve. I know that we called many more than four, and we kind, Lori herself contacted many more than four. That was the number we were able to get to meet. And we've had parents, and we still have parents, meeting on the action committees and other groups, and you've been to some of the parent meetings. So we went to the parents we've gotten to know in this six-month process since the visioning.
Well, we know more than four.
Yes, we do, and we were trying. And we have a larger group, just so you know, on the English language advisory group, which in part, thanks to an ongoing ELAC group that's been meeting, we have about a dozen parents.
Right. Well, so we've got to, we've got to expand that going forward, and I think, you know, the way to do it is, you're on the right track. This board has indicated it wants to see the LCAP come in every quarter with an update along the same way, and so I think aligning that with the parent advisory committee, so we're hearing from them-
Yeah.
-what they think, and the students. So they're educated, you know, quarter one, two, three, and four. By the time we get to June, it's not a last-minute thing.
Right.
These are sophisticated students who understand what they're doing and can give us, you know, the feedback that they've gone back to their populations and brought to us.
Can I make one more comment about engagement?
Yes.
The thing about this document is that the state really, they're at their best at this moment, but they are really making us accountable for our stakeholder engagement. They, the county has our feet to the fire in terms of being real about that. In the annual update, we are honest about the fact that many of the teachers, it's in there, surveyed, said they had never heard of the LCAP. And so there is transparency here. We come clean and say, "Yeah, they didn't even know." And when I started to rewrite it and talk to some major stakeholders, they, in terms of staff, they likewise didn't know about it. So I think we did better, but we can definitely improve in that.
Okay. Member Pat, are you trying to get a point?
Stretching my sleeve.
Okay, all right. The, so, I've got some big-picture points, and then I've got a ton of lesser points, and I don't know that the lesser points, it might be better to do those offline and sit down with you and the superintendent. But first of all, the conditions of learning, this is just a minor technical point. It only refers to three of the priorities. The, and it's, you know, if you look in the template, it's just A are the conditions of learning, the basic, the implementation of state standards, course access, and then there are a couple county ones. But those are the only conditions of learning. They're priorities, eight state priorities. So that's, it's just a nomenclature thing, but it's, we're going to confuse the public if we refer to the eight priorities as conditions of learning, because the state board has grouped three of the priorities and only three as conditions of learning.
That's my heard.
Okay.
But that's just very minor. The-
It was on some other, someone else's document that I made sense to call conditions of learning, and it's on that document that you're looking at, there are four conditions of learning, but there really are only three.
If you look at it on page four of the LCAP, it's only really the first three that are, the others are pupil outcomes and engagement. Those are the three buckets that the board, state board, has divided the eight state priorities into. Yeah. The, have you totaled up the total expenditures referenced in the LCAP? And how does that cor- No, for everything. Base, supplemental concentration, and how does that correspond to our $0.5 or $6 million of total LCFF expenditures? How much are we reflecting-
I thought that-
-total expenditures in the LCAP?
That's a good question. In the very back of the document, and we just finished, Mr. Affeldt, we just finished that this weekend, and so that was one of the last pieces we did, so we haven't got to examine it closely, but in the very back of the document, on pages 89 and 88, I believe, the template started to total those figures for us. Now, I have not yet been able to examine to what extent that reflects the entire district budget yet. I'm not sure if it totals at the bottom there or not.
Yeah, I couldn't find the exact answer to my question.
But I think I understand where you're heading.
Because there's not a all LCFF line. You have all funding sources. So you've got a baseline, which is good. It seems you, if I'm reading that right, we've reflected $4.2 million of $5.5 million of base spending on page 99 of the document.
That may be correct. I would need a little bit more time to analyze. We just got these numbers in, I'm sorry.
Right. So, and I guess what, the, the point is that we should be, this is supposed to be a comprehensive planning document that is transparent, and even at 4.2, we're way ahead of most, what most districts are doing in this, but, you know, I want to do it right, and we should be reflecting, in order comprehensively planned, we need to be transparent about all of our expenditures and how we're spending all of our expenditure. We also do more, and you've done Title I stuff, you've referenced some parcel tax stuff, but it seems bits and pieces, you know. Ideally, we're capturing all of our Title I and all of our Title III and all of the parcel tax. And if I had one to prioritize, I would say we should do what we did last year with the parcel tax. We had an attachment that explained to people how we were spending the parcel tax, and that funneled into different pieces of the program.
Okay, so that could be attached or embedded? That'd be easier if we could do that.
We did it just as an appendix, and then you can put it in at the-
Sure.
But, but higher priority than parcel tax, and the one we're legally required to do is to reflect all of the LCFF dollars, base supplemental and con, that we're spending on the eight priorities. Now, if we're spending on some local priority, like, we don't have to reflect that, but that's, I don't know what that would be, because almost everything we do is going to fall under one of those eight priorities.
So you would imagine, I think I remember this conversation last year, that our entire budget should add up to-
To be pretty close.
Pretty close to the entire budget.
Yeah. I mean, post-employment, retirement is like an example that the state board has given of something that probably wouldn't show up in your LCAP. The, the actions that are laid out under each of the three goals at the different sections of the LCAP are just, this is supposed to be a three-year planning document rolling, and it's really a one-year planning document.
In its current form, yes.
Yeah, I see 15, 16 actions, and I see, and, what's the term I'm looking for? Our annual measurall objectives for the out-years, years two and three are just replicated. It looks like we just cut and pasted what they are for 15, 16. We didn't sort of say, "Well, in year two, we're going to go a little further, and year three, we're going to go yet further." It just seems to be repeating what our one-year goal is. So we need, unless our, you know, our actions in year one are the same action we're going to do in year two- to do in year two, but our, still, I would think our goal would shift and we'd have a higher site for year two.
Right.
But it, but anyway, I think we need to move this from a one-year to a three-year planning document.
We'll look at that.
Okay. Does that make sense? Does this make sense? Okay, okay. The annual update is troubling in, in, in many respects. And I should say, let me start off with it. I agree that, that you've done a very good job of taking last year somewhat, somewhat disjointed or, or, you know, not necessarily well-aligned document and made it more aligned and comprehensive and logical. And you did that over the shift in the templates and, and, you know, underlying the thing you were reporting on. So, that was a complicated thing and I, I appreciate those, those movements you've, you've made. But the annual update indicates we didn't do a lot of the things we said we were going to do. And that, that's, that's the troubling piece. And that, so I think, and this board has talked about it at the retreat, and I think, you know, we've already talked about it here tonight. We, we want to see, as you suggested, quarterly reports throughout the year, how are we doing, meeting our, our actions. So, we're, we're keeping track, we're not just, you know, and this, it's on the board too. We shouldn't just be looking at this in June and say, hey, did we do it? Because it's too late to know if we did it. But what that, I think, means is a practical matter is that there are many of the things that we did not do are, were supplemental concentration expenditures that we didn't expend because we didn't do it. And if we didn't do it, then we have a carryover obligation to track, what did we say, what did we get in supplemental concentration for the current year, fourteen, fifteen, that we didn't spend for those purposes? And then that needs to be a bookmark that goes into the years moving forward that we, we need to fulfill that obligation.
We are, we are doing that and we know, we know what it is. Just a reminder to the board that there, and what I, may be the case, I'm not sure offhand, there were many, many suggestions for how to use supplemental concentration money. And then as a board, you ranked and ordered the top priorities and we stopped at a certain amount and we did those things. What I, what I believe may have happened is that the other items that were on the, what was called as the wish list at the time, were left in the plan. I'm not certain, I'd have to go back and look at that, but that maybe would happen because we, we only have a carryover of about forty-nine thousand dollars.
All right, well, well, we, we can go over my notes from, from what I saw, but there were, you know, for example, eighteen thousand in, in after-school tutoring for six to twelve that we didn't do in supplemental funds.
I don't think the board voted to, that was not the top of the rankings.
You don't think it was in the top priority?
No.
And then why was it in our?
That, well, that's what I'm suggesting, is that I think those things were left in the plan.
Oh, I see. Really?
Yeah, what happened, you, you might recall is that there was a list of items that added up to about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses. The board, you know.
Remember that, we had two-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand.
Correct, but the, I don't believe that there was an editing process to go back in and pull those other items out of the plan.
If, if that is the case, then, then we don't have that carryforward obligation.
We have a small amount.
Okay, but, so I guess I want to go over that with you closely. But I appreciate that you're, you're thinking about that.
Oh, yeah.
And, and how to, how to do that. The, section three, we need to do a better job on section three, which is, which is a really critical piece. That's the, where we both identify what our supplemental concentration, school-wide and district-wide programs are. And justify why we can, why we've chosen to do a school-wide or district-wide program. And we're a high-concentration district, more than fifty-five percent, okay? You're excused if you need another breath of fresh air.
Just the ladies' room.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. We, we also need in that section to justify why that action or service is principally directed toward high-need pupils' goals and, and why we think it's going to be effective. And in the annual updates in the future, we'll have to revisit that and say, well, gee, was it effective or not? Did we hit our goals, et cetera? But for now, and I didn't really see the justification, I didn't, we should see a list of, there must be thirty things we're spending supplemental concentration funds on, and it's sort of a summary without a justification. And it needs to be a list, it's identified each thing, and a justification, separate justification for, for each item that's been in that, put in that list. And I, I did have specific, I did take issue with some, some of the specific items that we have assigned to supplemental concentration spending. And, and we can, we can go over those individually, but, you know, an example that, that comes to mind was I think we're proposing to spend it on, like, our, improving our SARB attendance, which strikes me as a, as sort of a core, basic thing we need to be doing. We're running a school, we're required by law to, you know, do attendance and make sure kids come to school and, and, you know, report to ones who aren't. And, and that, that's not a, something that's principally directed toward our high-need students, that's just something that we need to do for all students. So, I, I wouldn't put that, and I'm not sure it's an increased or improved service. It's, it's what we should have been doing and a service we've always should have been providing, so that's one example. Lastly, the parental involvement is one of the eight state priorities. And it actually has two dimensions that, that are among the twenty-four that the state is looking for. We have, it seems to me, some goals and metrics around participation in programs, are parents coming, are they doing it, which is good, that's good. But we don't have any metrics along the other dimension that's required, which is parent participation in decision-making in the district. So, we need to set some goals and annual measurall objectives that, that are around, like, increasing our parent advisory council, going above and, maybe we're going to meet four times a year, that's, that's a good goal, let's put that in and track it. You know, functioning school-site councils and PTOs and, you know, I don't want to limit it, but there are other metrics that we, we should be focused on for improving parent involvement. Those are my, those are my overarching points. Any, any questions or thoughts on that? Other, other board members, anything else? Okay, all right, so let's set up time.
Yep.
And, and I don't want to take any more of the time tonight on, on this item. I think we already have public comment on this, but.
Can I comment on something you brought up?
Uh, you may, since, yeah, the hour's late, but I don't think we'll be overrun by public comment.
You brought up the after-school tutoring and then it was mentioned that that was voted down as a priority or not put in as a priority.
It was a priority, it just wasn't one of the top ranking ones.
It wasn't in the top. I'd like to bring up, I did my master's in educational leadership last year. I surveyed in the twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen school year, the current seniors and the recent graduates. And in that survey, I was focused on what made them successful going on to college. I focused on students who went on to college. And over fifty percent of the students in an open-answer question commented on after-school tutoring, which ended three years ago, but for the re, oh, sorry, and that was for the recent graduates who had access to that most of their high school career, whereas thirty percent of the current seniors, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, commented on that. Second comment was supportive staff. But it just, I've been complaining for the last three years, probably to the wrong ears, that we need an after-school tutoring program. And if you look at the numbers in the report from the, this, this report, our, our current graduation rate this year is lower than it has been the last two, and these are kids who haven't had access to tutoring for three years. And it's, we're seeing a decline in the ability of our students. So, I think maybe we should reconsider that after-school tutoring part to be a bigger point, especially when student voice has said, you know, massively, that's one of the reasons they were successful. And I just, I didn't think you guys were aware of that.
Yeah, appreciate the comment and, and I don't, I know I read it somewhere, because there's a lot here, but it's actually, the, the ranking that we were referencing was last year. The proposal in this year's LCAP, well, for fifteen, sixteen, is actually to, to bring in after-school tutoring, is that right, Ms. McDonald?
It's on the high school level.
At the high school level? K, K-12? Certainly at high school level.
Certainly at high school level. Parents are, it, it is coming up also for the E, English Language Learner Parent Advisory Council, they have, they're, and it came up at the coffee with the principal a few months ago. They are really hoping for after-school tutoring. The request primarily has been around math.
It says, it says, action nine, action ten, students who are struggling academically will receive tutoring support, district-wide program, tutoring support, forty thousand dollars of concentration funding. So, it seems to be in the current draft. Mr. Ferber, do you want to, why don't you come up and make some comment for the folks at home?
Two things I had mentioned in, in my presentation, which was kind of short, was that we, we do have after-school tutoring coming in, in the fall. We have that in conjunction with our Odysseyware, which is our credit recovery. Also, we have intensive intervention for our math and language arts students coming into ninth grade. So, we have a few things in place that are going to really help our students. It will cost the district money, but certainly not the eighteen thousand, but it will, it's something we have built in that we're, that we're going forward with.
Yep, and, and some of those, the Odysseyware is in the, is in the plan and those are being reflected. But if it's not, we should let Ms. McDonald know and we'll.
I've been working with Ms. McDonald and Dr. Rubio and I, most of the things that we have in the LCAP that comes from our end has been either something we discussed at a staff meeting or we've carried it and agreed to bring it forward. I mean, Mr. Wainer was involved in the, in the master schedule process and he saw, he clicked on it himself, the intensive intervention slots for the classes we're going to do for the incoming ninth graders. So, there's, there's a lot of things that we're moving toward and doing, so.
Okay, well, thank you. We, we.
Thank you.
We'll, you know, to be continued, but we want to make the right investments. All right, I'm going to move us on to the next item, which is about our budget. Do, Superintendent, you want to introduce?
Sure.
The next item?
Mr. Lewis, do you want to say something first?
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis. Is this on the LCAP item?
It's on the LCAP item.
Okay, so we won't move on yet, please.
One thing that parents who have come through SST and VIBO4's meetings over the past year, since we did not, since we discontinued the after-school programs, is the increased number of families and students who need those services. They need the after-school programs, they need the tutoring, and year after year, we've said, we don't have it, we don't have it, we don't have it. And it was placed in the, in the LCAP because there is a strong need for it. Currently, what has happened over the past two years is that teachers, out of the kindness of their hearts, are opening up their classrooms and staying at school until three, four, five, six o'clock in the evening, providing those services without charging the district one dime. And it's happened over and over and over and over again. The elementary school desperately needs after-school programs. We used to have them, they haven't been in existence for a while, and so there's an increase in the amount of students who come through Student Success because they need those programs. So, please look at that for all the students, not just the, the high school students. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to the budget item.